Sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Maplewood and South Orange. It's wonderful to see such a great turnout here tonight, not only of the candidates, but also of the community. Just one announcement before I begin, there's a black Honda in the parking lot with its lights on, license NWI 25E.
NWT.
NWT 25E, so if it's yours, if I want to turn it on. Let me introduce you to the candidates. We have Walter Clark, Geraldine Mayhew, Joseph Kika, I'm sorry, Sheena Callen, Joseph Kika, Geraldine Mayhew, Robert Sandow, Stephen Schnell, and Kelly Sullivan. And our moderator for tonight is Michelle Bobrow, and she will go over the format for tonight with you.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to see you all here tonight. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Elections and voting are core concerns for the League of Women Voters. We are committed to providing fact-based information about issues and the positions candidates take on those issues to help voters make their own decisions and participate in the election process. The LWV never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. Any use of the League name or footage from the debate in campaign materials, literature, or advertising of any kind, including internet, cable, or television, has not been authorized by the League of Women Voters. I urge you to turn off all your electronic devices at this point. League places an emphasis on voting. Voter registration drives, registration in high schools and colleges, and efforts to streamline voter registration laws are all a continuing part of the League's activities. Other voter service projects, such as providing information on the candidates' positions and an explanation of the ballot questions, are part of every election and distributed through the local and state leagues. Study your sample ballot or mail-in ballot carefully before voting. Throughout its 92-year history, the League has been a voice for sound government practices. This commitment will prevail in this century and beyond. If you are interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I encourage you to pick up some of the League's literature on our website, lvwnj.org, or outside of the registration table. As a courtesy to the candidates, please turn off all cell phones and other electronic devices, and refrain from taking photographs during this debate. There is to be no recording of this event with one exception, which is the property of League of Women Voters of New Jersey. Please hold your applause to the end to allow the candidates their maximum time to share their views. This debate for the South Orange Board of Trustees is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Maplewood, South Orange. The seven candidates you have just met, they have drawn for order for their presentations. Let me tell you the format for this evening. They will have two minutes each for an opening statement, for which they will go in alphabetical order. Then they have drawn for positions to discuss questions that have been distributed and sent to them by the League. Each candidate will have one minute, and other candidates, to start, the one who drew the number will have one minute, and the other candidates may have up to 30 seconds for response. Then we will have questions from the audience, and you must submit them on cards. League of Women Voters representatives will pick them up and will screen them for appropriateness. Make sure that your questions are not personal, but are related to the issues and are related to the position. And then we will close with a two-minute closing for our tablet order. Got it? Okay, so let us start. Mr. Clark.
All right, I need to do the mic check. You just sit up here. How's that? Good evening, everybody. Fifteen years ago, my wife and I were looking to settle down and raise kids, and like a lot of people do, we made that matrix of what we were looking for. In our case, we were looking for a diverse community, someplace where we could raise mixed-race children. We were looking for a cosmopolitan community. We were looking for one with a lively arts scene, that was community-friendly, with access to the city, open spaces, and of course, good schools. And we found all that in South Orange. And over the years, we've come to love that about our town. Our town has some really unique qualities and great assets, and I think we can leverage those assets to take on its challenges and make a better South Orange. I've been committed to improving the community in South Orange as a volunteer for many years now, as chairman of the Environmental Commission, as chairman of the Energy Policy Committee, as former chair of the Sustainable South Orange Committee, as a member of the Community Emergency Response Team, and as a coach and a board member on the Cougar Soccer Club. In that time, I've learned to collaborate with, motivate, and lead volunteers to produce real results, like developing and winning the grant that got us EV chargers in the downtown area, like the South Orange Environmental Commission taking over River Day, and since 2010, growing it each year. And of course, leading the team that got South Orange certified in the Sustainable Pol jersey program in the very first year of its existence. All of those were real results, tangible results, little or no taxpayer, money involved. That was quick.
Just call, mic check.
Can you guys hear me okay? Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this debate tonight. I want to thank all of you for coming out and caring about municipal elections. Last municipal election saw less than a 10% turnout, so for you being here tonight, it means a lot. I also want to thank the existing Board of Trustees, and specifically the outgoing trustees, Michael Goldberg, Janine Bauer, and Nancy Gould for their service to this community over the past four years. My name is Sheena Callen, and I'm looking to earn your vote on Tuesday, May 14th. I've been a village volunteer for over a decade. Over the past year alone, I've served as chair of the Citizens Public Safety Committee, of which I'm also the founder. I've delivered to you programs like National Night Out, connecting over 800 residents with public safety departments. Last year, the rescue squad came to me and said they were running a budget deficit and needed help. I worked with them to raise $30,000 in less than four months. I'm also a member of the Community Emergency Response Team, and immediately after Hurricane Sandy, I organized a community cleanup that brought residents together with our Department of Public Works to help in the recovery and cleaning efforts. Professionally, I'm the executive director of the American Planning Association, where each and every day, I am on the ground with municipalities, planners, and people who care about city issues to address some of the largest challenges that face New Jersey's municipalities, such as transportation, economic development, development, redevelopment, housing, et cetera. I see best practices day in and day out. One of my largest challenges on this campaign was people trying to figure out which team I'm on. I've worked with three administrations and five different trustee boards, and you're not going to find an answer because I don't follow people. I follow the good ideas. If you have a good idea, I'm ready to work with you, and I can work with anyone in this community to execute the results that everybody wants to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kika.
I'll use the microphone. My name is Joseph Kika, I'm a third-generation member of this town. My grandparents came to South Orange, my parents had a house here in South Orange, and I grew up here in South Orange. I'm a district governor for 16E with the Lions Club. I also, during the time of the hurricane, was able to procure $10,000 grant. With that $10,000 grant, we bought chainsaws, generators, food. And dealing as a district governor, I have three counties that I had to take care of. During that time, I had my cellphone, that was the only thing that functioned, so with my cellphone, I was able to call, text, and kind of email. We procured that loan, got the monies needed, and dispersed it throughout through three counties. I'm currently now sitting on a group that is working on a $300,000 grant to help not only Essex, Morris, and Union County, but also Ocean, Monmouth, and the rest. I'm a Special Olympics coach. I teach Special Olympics, the bocce ball section down here at the Italian Club on Church Street. I'm also a member of that club. And I'm also on the South Orange Seaton Hall Engagement Committee, where we have a zero budget, but yet every year, we put together a frisbee championship, where we have people come in. Last year, with a zero budget, we were able to have Seaton Hall, Montclair State, Rutgers, and NYU come in. And with a zero budget, they had a good time. I'm also what is known as a senior education and training consultant. I deal with infrastructure every day of the week, networking, voice-over IP, so on and so forth, so that is a good background that I have solid if we're going to do any infrastructure here in this town. I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters tonight, and the people of the town for coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayhew.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Geraldine Mayhew Moore, and I actually am running for village trustee because I actually love South Orange. I've been in South Orange for about 20 years. My husband, who's a lieutenant and also 20-year veteran in the South Orange Police Department, is a second-generation in South Orange. We are proud to raise our 10-year-old daughter in South Orange, who once told us that we should never leave South Orange because South Orange reflects the community that she wants to live in. I'm also honored that my husband puts his life on the line every day for every resident, as well as for the Village of South Orange. I will say to you that I've had time to speak with many residents, and many of them shared their personal concerns with me, on taxes, on public safety, on water, on infrastructure, just to name a few. I am prepared to address those issues. As a finance professional for over 15 years, I will be committed and diligent in examining our budget, with work, and I will work to develop measures that benefit the village and the residents. What I will say to you is, as a trustee, it is important for us to listen and be the voice of the residents in the community. Like Mrs. Zobitz, who's on Blanchard Road, who shared with me that she spent so much money fixing her car because of neglected roads. Or for others who are homeowners, who talk about being able to pay their mortgage but could not afford to pay the taxes. I think whatever it takes, the residents must be heard. What I will also say is that I have the commitment, the experience, the passion, and the dedication to not only preserve what makes us special in South Orange, but also to enhance the quality of life for each resident. So I thank you for allowing me to be here, and I thank the League of Women Voters for giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts and our ideas with each and every one of you.
Thank you. Mr. Sandow.
Good evening. My name is Rob Sandow. Soon after moving to South Orange in 2008, I became involved in the community. An issue came up in our community in Tuxedo Park with a zoning variance application that my neighborhood opposed. I became one of its most vocal critics, helping to raise funds and speaking at the zoning board meetings to defeat it. Ultimately, we were successful. That got me involved in the community and involved in the neighborhood. After that, I served for three years as the co-president of the Tuxedo Park Association. I founded the, I co-founded the Communities with Colleges Coalition, a local organization opposed to the New Jersey Assembly Bill, which would have granted immunity from local zoning ordinances to private colleges and universities. Working with other such organizations around the state, we've been successful in keeping this bill off the legislative agenda. Last year, I looked at positive changes that were beginning to happen at SOPAC, and I wanted to be part of its turnaround. So I joined the SOPAC Board of Governors, and I want to help SOPAC in any way that I can. As a musician, I've performed in the Downtown After Sundown Series every single year since its inception. We have tried very hard to make downtown a place to go in the evenings for the residents so that, so that the flash mob situation would be alleviated. Personally, I hold a degree in electrical engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, and I'm a corporate information technology executive with 25 years of experience making tough decisions and getting projects done on time, on budget, and on scope. As trustee, my door will always be open. I'll be accessible, I'll listen to your concerns, and I'll make it my mission to run the village with the highest standards of ethics and transparency, and to make South Orange the best it can be.
Thank you. Mr. Schnell.
Good evening, friends and residents, and thank you for the League for hosting us for this event. As a South Orange resident for over 13 years, my excitement and pride for our village is greater than ever. Like many, I came here for the diversity, the easy commute to New York City for my wife and myself, and equality education for my daughter. I've been an active member of our community and schools, and currently serve on the Board of Directors for three local nonprofit organizations involving higher education, volunteerism, and community affairs. My public service experience has provided me with many new and interesting perspectives about what makes our village great, what its challenges are, and a vision shared with my fellow road bee running mates as to how to make our village even better. I was very fortunate to have a successful 30-year professional career that now permits me the freedom to devote my time in my retirement, and my time, my passion, interest, and talents to public service and giving back to the village that I love. I attribute my career and nonprofit success to my leadership skills, and ability to collaborate to achieve common goals, and to inspire and encourage active participation. My certification as a compliance and ethics professional will carry forward in my civic duties to uphold transparency and the sharing of information among village government, residents, and business owners. My experience provides a unique advantage that I will leverage addressing South Orange's most pressing challenges. I'm currently serving on the Recruitment and Retention Committee for the South Orange Village Center Alliance, and our team is working collaboratively to attract desirable businesses to our central business district that will become popular destinations for residents, students, and visitors. Another ongoing focus of mine is to coordinate the town and Seaton Hall's untapped mutually beneficial assets. I'm looking forward to working with the residents, the business owners, my running mates, and village government to enhance our village and create an improved town that we can all be proud of. We have a critical call to action to make South Orange a special destination and a desirable place to work, study, conduct business, and live a fulfilled life.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. I too would like to just thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and like to thank all of you for coming out and spending your Tuesday night with the candidates so you can hear what we have to say. I am Kelly Sullivan. Many of you may know me as Kelly Mathews, because when I grew up here in South Orange, that was my maiden name. I went to grammar school, high school, and college here. I obtained an accounting degree from Seaton Hall University, and I have a law degree from Seaton Hall Law School. During my early years in the village, I worked for several businesses in the downtown. Upon graduating from law school, I clerked for a matrimonial judge in Morris County. I have worked in public accounting, the banking industry, private practice, and now my husband and I own and operate our own law firm right here in South Orange. I am currently serving a second term on the Supreme Court of New Jersey Ethics Committee. I also volunteer down in Newark in the matrimonial early settlement program. I've been doing that for about 20 years. I've been a radio reader for Eyes of New Jersey, the electronic information and education service, for over 13 years. We operate out of the old library. I'm a member of Clean Sweep of New Jersey. You may have seen us in our bright green t-shirts sweeping up the downtown. I have, I've been an achieved tutor in the middle school. I've served two terms as an alumni on the Mary Lawn Board of Alumni, and I was honored as Distinguished Alumni of the Year in 2007. I was a member of the Interfaith Hospitality Remembrance Committee when my parish, Our Lady of Sorrows, hosted the event a few years ago. I currently serve on the OLS Parish Council. I am the chairperson of the 125th Anniversary Committee at Our Lady of Sorrows, and I sing in the choir.
Thank you. Several questions have been developed by the League of Women Voters. The candidates have drawn lots as to who will be the first to answer, and they will have one minute each, and the responders will have 30 seconds. Mr. Kika was the first to choose the first question. Please identify the infrastructure challenges that would be your top priority to address if you're elected to office, and explain how you think they can be best achieved.
Well, recently, I watched most of the meetings at home, and recently watching one of the town meetings, there was a discussion about the cost of the actual town hall. And how that should be done is, all buildings, no matter which one we own, the police, the town hall, ICE, we could leave the fire department out. Each one of these should be evaluated for functionality before we go further in cost. We were discussing amongst ourselves at a meeting recently where, if we were to take the cost of the building now, at the $5 million mark, and take a look at Mary Lawn, which is coming to an end Saturday, and that's been around as long as I can remember, if we were to kind of purchase that building, this is food for thought, if we were to purchase that building at a reasonable rate, we could probably move in the police and the fire, police and the town hall into that building.
Thank you.
Oh, that was it, okay.
I'm sorry, it runs away with us, doesn't it? We're just going to go down the line.
I was just going to ask if you'd just glance at me every now and then. I'm trying to make sure you see the 30 seconds, but some of you are looking at it.
I'm going to take my Ray glasses off.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayhew.
To respond to 30 seconds?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. You know, for me, in terms of, to support what Joe just mentioned, kind of did a little bit of the math and looked at where we are going to spend upwards of $10 million to renovate the village hall. I'm all for completing, keeping literally a historic site, but when I look at how much we're going to spend, it equals to almost $500,000 per square feet for 30 individuals. I think we need to be a little bit more fiscally responsible, and we can actually create and keep the silhouette of village hall, but look at other opportunities that Joe just mentioned, like Mary Lawn.
Mr. Sandow.
First, I would develop a long-term strategy to proactively address road surfacing. While I'm told such a plan currently exists, anyone who's driven on Tyrell, or Glenview, or South Ridgewood lately, I think would certainly have to question whether it has been implemented effectively. On the issue of village hall, I concur with my, with the people sitting here to my right. It is estimated at $7 million currently, and if we are going to go through with it, we need to make sure that there's tight oversight on the project to provide further scope and budget creep.
Thank you. Mr. Schnell.
First thing I would suggest as a part of a plan would be an inventory of the existing buildings and the relative condition, so we could prioritize their needs. But before we get there, I actually believe one of the things we're missing is a good maintenance plan. We can avoid getting to the point where we are right now with town hall, if we just would have been doing regular yearly maintenance and preparing ourselves by putting monies aside to make sure that we have some sort of sinking fund in the case of an infrastructure challenge like this. What I fear is that we're oftentimes avoiding that problem, and we're tempting fate by moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan.
I agree with Mr. Sandow that we need vigilant oversight of the roads, curbs, and sidewalks in the town. We need a program with constant rotation for review and repair of our roads. And I think we need to keep the residents advised as to when their road will be coming up for repair, because they don't know, and all they know is they live on a bumpy road, and their house values are decreasing because you can't bring somebody to a $500,000 house while they're bumping along on the road.
Mr. Clark.
I agree with Steve Schnell that we need to start our infrastructure challenges with a proper inventory of all of our infrastructure, and that way we can prioritize and plan. Because with limited funds, we have to have a prioritization and an action plan. And then going forward, I really want to work on incorporating a sustainability element into the master plan of our village, so that any decisions made going forward incorporate sustainability.
Thank you. Ms. Callen.
This is the cost of neglect. 120 years, $7.2 million for this village hall renovation, and it's way too much. We started at $5 million. A few months later, we're looking at $6 million, $7 million, and what we need to do moving forward is we've secured about $1 million in grants from the state of New Jersey, the New Jersey Historic Trust, and what I will do as a candidate is help lobby on the federal level to bring in national historic grants to help maintain and preserve village hall. The village has studied this, they have spent $50,000 and worked on it for a year, and the alternatives are not there.
Thank you. Ms. Callen drew for the second question, which is, what is your vision for redevelopment in South Orange, and how does it differ from the village's current plan?
It doesn't differ. I fully support the vision plan that was done by the village several years ago and adopted. That was the framework for 10 to 20 years of development in this community. The three priorities that I would like to see is increasing our density. We know that supporting a business district requires foot traffic, and with the new gateway project in the Third Inn Valley, those residents and those units coming online will help further support the types of businesses that we have in the business corridors and the type of businesses we want to attract and retain. We also need to play a larger role in economic development as a Board of Trustees, specifically attracting anchors. We saw what happened with Ashley Marketplace. Bringing something online at the time it was eaten, it started kind of a ripple effect of all these other smaller businesses that wanted to locate next to it. Right now, we have a vacant blockbuster space. That is a project that the Board of Trustees should get involved with immediately because it's the next large anchor moving east on South Orange Ave. And then we need to focus our time and energy on Irvington Avenue, which has the most potential as a corridor with resources already there.
Thank you. Mr. Kika.
Well, when I hear the word "redevelop," I always hear the, or just see the vision of tearing things down. I like to keep the word "vision," but use the word "rethink." What usually happens is, when you bring in a lot of rentals, a lot of times what happens is you end up saturating the market with rentals in the rental area, and as the prices go down during the rental time, also property values go down. So I would like to see, rentals are fine, and we do have a lot of rent space for our citizens here in town, including the college students, but I would like to just see more homes.
Thank you. Ms. Mayhew.
To piggyback off what Joe Kika just shared is, I believe that owner-occupied multifamily housing is important in South Orange. We are not a big community that can be saturated with a number of people. Additionally, we do realize that ownership builds roots, and roots keep people in our community, and that is important. The other thing I would say is, as Joe shared, saturation doesn't help us to move forward. We need to build things that bring ratables into our community, and ownership does that.
Thank you. Mr. Sandow.
Where I differ with the current plan is, I think we should not offer pilots as the status quo for every developer that now expects one. High-quality commercial ratables are the way to keep homeowner taxes reasonable. However, this won't happen if we continue to give the maximum possible tax abatement to every new developer. Maybe some sort of pilot is required in order for the project to be financially viable, but the time they negotiate the terms of an agreement is during the RFP process, where bidders should be asked to disclose their expected tax abatements before developers show them. If you wait till after, you have no leverage.
Thank you. Mr. Schnell.
I agree with Sheena that the vision plan was an investment well-spent. However, it's just a framework. We need to get very specific and go further down the line there. So working with the South Orange Village Center Alliance, we're taking a look at how we can proactively market to specific businesses that we would like to entertain. And the way we're also accomplishing that is we're working with Seaton Hall, the leadership of Seaton Hall Stillman Business School, to identify and work to find out, do market research and surveys to find out what our residents, students, and businesses are looking to have in the downtowns.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan.
High-density, affordable housing is not the answer for South Orange. We want to revitalize our businesses downtown. We want to encourage the multifamily residential ownership. We want to bring in new commercial businesses for ratables. And we do not want to encourage or assume that abatements will be automatic.
And we do not want to encourage or assume that abatements will be automatic with new development in town. We want proper contract oversight and responsible decisions made.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
Several years ago, we adopted a vision plan. Money well spent, in my opinion. I think we need to continue with that plan. The key is connectivity. If we're going to maximize ourselves as a transit village, then we need to have connectivity in more than one way. And that means bikes, walking, alternative transit. One thing that is missing from that plan is the long-term plan for structured parking. There's simply not enough parking to maximize our village and we need to have a plan.
Thank you. The next question, and Mr. Schnell will go first.
I think number three is... Yeah, you're right.
Your first question. Your third.
He's fourth. I'm sixth.
Now we are sixth.
You're asking your eight questions.
Yes.
Ask that, you want to go first?
Okay. The question Mr. Schnell has is, how successful...
I'm happy to just have a three if I'd like to.
No, I already crossed it out. Then you can answer it in your closing. Okay. How successful has South Orange Village been in implementing plans for sharing services with other local entities and in what ways would you expand or modify existing arrangements?
Actually, I think we've been relatively successful in a small way. The municipal court that's been moved to Maplewood, lawn cutting, car maintenance, those are effective ways of demonstrations of how shared services can be put in place. I don't think the monetary impact has been as great as we'd like. So I think we need to do things on a much larger scale. But first, before we can do that, we really need to reestablish the shared services committee. This was something that was looked at some time ago and given the timing, it did not work out. So before we move forward, and I think we should be looking across multiple towns in our county at large, not just Maplewood alone. And by doing that, we can readdress the plan to identify potential opportunities and a reallocation of resources so we can discuss which town perhaps has the best services and finding the optimal efficiencies to move forward with that. I believe this will be a difficult challenge as it requires strong leadership and negotiating skills, but I think the three of us as trustees can do that.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan.
Shared services are a positive thing, but they should only be done for South Orange if they benefit the residents of South Orange and they help increase the property values. We feel that this has not been done well enough. One suggestion we would make is hire an arborist to monitor, prune, and maintain our trees. Beautification is one thing, but safety of our residents is another, and we saw what happened during Hurricane Sandy and we'd like to avoid that in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
We've had some successes with shared services, for instance, the municipal courts and turf cutting and sharing mechanical specialties. However, when there was a referendum years ago, South Orange voted in favor of doing the shared studies. However, Maplewood voted against it. I think we need to go back to that with more of a PR campaign because where there's a lack of political will, we need to create one with a groundswell of citizen support for it.
Thank you. Ms. Cullen.
I'll have to disagree with Kelly on her statement, only if it benefits our residents. That's a problem with shared services in the state right now, is that every municipality is only willing to do things when it benefits them only. When in reality, shared services work because it's a give-and-take relationship. Not everybody is the best at everything that they do and the sooner elected officials realize that it is a give-take relationship and that all parties sitting at the table have to work collaboratively and in some instances, you may not be the winner, but on the other instance, you might be. That's how shared services work.
Thank you. Mr. Kikuk.
One of the best examples of shared services, I would probably have to say, over many years, excuse me, is the sharing between South Orange and Maplewood with the Board of Ed. Some of the things we may want to look at and we already know about is what is known as mutual aid. The fire department uses it all the time. When they go out to a call, if they need help, they pull from mutual aid. Same thing, we can work with other town police officers, Newark, Irvington, if they're part of our board, if they want to be, East Orange, Orange, and everything else, they'll work with us.
Thank you. Ms. Mayhew.
So I have to disagree with the comment that we have shared services with Maplewood as it relates to municipal court. Quite frankly, we're actually paying Maplewood for our services now and that practice allows us to lose profit from a South Orange perspective. I understand the point of making sure that shared services benefits all, but the reality, it should not be at a loss for South Orange or the residents of South Orange.
Mr. Sandow.
I think that we've had some success here. You know, we've combined the courts and code enforcement officials with Maplewood and that's probably the most prominent. One thing I do hear over and over is about a drop-off in code enforcement lately. So this is something that we really need to keep a close eye on to see if it's actually going to work or not. I think there are certain core, non-core public safety functions that we could look into, such as sharing facilities and support functions. I'm certainly not advocating more than police departments, but there are things that could be done.
Thank you. The next question, Ms. Sullivan will answer first. What are the most significant public safety issues South Orange residents face? How well do you believe the town has addressed them? And what are your thoughts about how we can maximize the effectiveness of our police and firefighters in making South Orange a safer place to live and do business?
Well, our police and fire department have one of the top response rates in New Jersey. And personally, I have experienced that because my home was broken into many years ago and my husband and I had come home from an event and he shot up the stairs, not even knowing if someone was still in the house. I immediately got on the phone, called the police. They were at our home within minutes. So I know for a fact that our police are responsive. I believe it's imperative that we protect the health and safety and welfare of our residents. If the crime in our community goes up, property values are going to decrease. I also know that the police took very good care of monitoring those flash mob emails and that networking, and they helped prevent the flash mobs from reoccurring in the village. So I think that... Time.
You can finish your sentence if it's brief. Mr. Clark.
Throughout the campaign, in every neighborhood I've been in, every resident I've spoken with, one of the main safety concerns has actually been traffic and speeding. As a father of two children, I appreciate that and I feel it. The key here is engineering, education, and enforcement. Engineering is the expensive piece of that. Enforcement is the way to go in the near term. I think we need to set up more speed traps and with the revenue we gain from that, put that back into more safety.
She's good.
Finish your sentence. Ms. Cullen.
All public safety issues are significant. I would say specifically, one of the first things I would like done in the police department is we recently commissioned a study and a top priority, is immediately changing the current shift schedules and creating one that is better aligned to service demands. I think in the short term, it was clear to us from the ICMA report that right now, our peak hours aren't coinciding with the top times that we have overlap within the police department and in the immediate time being, we need to make sure that we're being run as efficiently as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Kikuk.
A lot of people run surveys and sometimes it's beneficial and sometimes it's not, taking into consideration that we do have to maintain security. Also, at Seton Hall, that might be one issue that wasn't covered in the survey. The other one is, we've got to be very careful because if we only have X amount of police on the street at any given time and they're given citations for speeding, that means for the other things like break-in entries and everything else, we may lose them. So sustaining a well-rounded, well-numbered police department is imperative.
Thank you. Ms. Mayhew.
People live in South Orange because of its diversity, but as you know, you mentioned a little bit, Walter, that people have shared with you that the two concerns are traffic and speeding. I will share with you that depending on where you live in South Orange, there's also issues of public safety. We can't neglect the fact of what surrounds us from a South Orange perspective. So as far as I'm concerned, the police is a critical part of who we are and should be part of the fabric of our community. And as for the fifty thousand dollar study that we spent, and we literally did six months ago, nothing has come of it.
Mr. Sandow.
I too don't think that this question can be adequately addressed without at least some discussion on the ICMA report. In fact, we paid fifty thousand dollars to an expert to perform an assessment and make exactly the sorts of recommendations that this question asks. I read the report and I agree with some things in it and I don't agree with some things in it, but I do believe it raises some valid issues. At the very least, the board of trustees should address the report and debate the findings. After all, we already paid for it.
Mr. Schnell.
I too have read the report and one thing that was not mentioned by this panel, which I think is really worth mentioning, is the use of technology, more expanded use of technology. Cameras, video surveillance, both as a deterrent and as also a way of helping with investigations. After a crime is committed, the police actually have an opportunity to go back using, looking at video and to go back and in many cases, have been able to identify and arrest the individual. It also can be used with more enforcement, an opportunity to put more money back into the budget. We have a finite amount of people, finite budget, we should use technology to increase efficiency.
Thank you. The next question, the first person to answer will be Ms. Mayhew. SOPAC is a wonderful performing arts venue, yet it's not able to operate on a sound economic footing. How can the Village of South Orange help to change that so that the viability of SOPAC is not threatened by insufficient resources?
Thank you. First of all, I'll start and say that National Main Street Study says that most successful communities have either a university or an arts center. The beauty of it in South Orange is we have both. These two assets have been, quite frankly, underutilized. Culture is one of the most important things for the development of a town and a town rises because of its culture. Personally, for me, I give a score of incomplete as it relates to SOPAC. I think that we could have done more to engage SOPAC and rekindle the relationship with Seton Hall, which was a commitment originally. I think that also, we have an opportunity to leverage and build around SOPAC so that people come to SOPAC and come to South Orange and spend money. We have not done enough and we've left it alone to be neglected.
Mr. Sandow.
I'm a member of the SOPAC Board of Governors. I have years of experience working at the board level of nonprofit theater companies. First of all, SOPAC cannot operate under the debt load that it currently carries. That's not SOPAC's fault, that's the fault of a prior administration. Funders don't want to fund debt service, they want to fund programming. Therefore, the current proposal to take back the debt is sound. Second of all, I've had numerous conversations with new executive director Mark Packer and I really believe that he gets it. He understands what is going to be successful here and he's going to bring us the kind of programming that we need.
Thank you. Mr. Schnell.
So I actually am a co-producer on Broadway, so I know what it takes to run an organization with SOPAC to make it profitable. I agree, actually, with Roger. We do have to take the ownership of the building, like the tenants. From there, the key is, since they're not servicing debt, we'll be able to go out and ask for outside foundations, grants, and corporate sponsorships to actually reduce the amount of dependency on our tax dollars. We also should be increasing the utilization of that space. These are phenomenal facilities and we should make sure that they're fully utilized.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan.
SOPAC has been underutilized, but the original vision for SOPAC was in line with the development of the town. The vision was never followed through. We need to funnel people from a vital business community into the SOPAC. We need to draw people in and the SOPAC will thrive. We... Excuse me. We did not develop the structure to support the SOPAC and we need to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
I'm in agreement with Steve Dearam as far as SOPAC goes. I think we should, by my instinct, and additionally, we have to remember though, that it does have ripple effects in our community. It is a gateway to our town for people from outside of our town. And so it has an economic impact outside of just its day-to-day operations itself.
Ms. Cullen.
The viability of SOPAC is threatened by insufficient resources and we don't have any more resources to give. So the question is, who does? What I would like this town to consider is Essex County taking over the South Orange Performing Arts Center. We've seen this in other communities where small municipalities have tried to take on PACs by themselves unsuccessfully and the counties have stepped into the corner. This was done in Union County and Bergen County. If it happened in Essex County, it would be the one performing arts center that is a county facility. I find that their resources to help bring in more of a regional population would be good for SOPAC.
Thank you. Time up. Mr. Kikuk.
I agree with bringing in some of the Essex County arts, bringing them in, finding out who they are, some arts of the state, bring them in. When I was growing up in this town, this was a very popular art center. I remember they used to have huge art programs here. And we have to figure out a way between maybe working with Seton Hall, maybe even the Papermill Playhouse and all the other ones to see what they would do, do a kind of off-broadway and bring them here.
Thank you. The next question will be answered first by Mr. Clark. Our community was hit hard by Hurricane Sandy. How would you analyze the village's response? What was done well and what would you have done differently?
I'd like to start by saying I think the village's response to Hurricane Sandy was very good. The police, fire, and the DPW did a fantastic job, given all the challenges that we all faced. I think our main challenge was really with our utility. As a member of the community emergency response team, I experienced our response to Hurricane Sandy, not only as a resident who lost power like the rest of you did, but also in staffing the shelters here in town, where we were able to help our community because of our volunteer infrastructure. I think going forward, one of the things we need to address is thinking about our trees as infrastructure. We need to communicate the rules on who is responsible for the maintenance of those trees, whether it's a town, utility, or resident, and we need to communicate that to the residents better so that they can then in turn inventory their own lots and respond and that way we are planning ahead before the next storm happens and managing our tree population.
Thank you. Ms. Cullen.
The village did an adequate job, but good can be great. The first thing is communications needs to be a lot better and I think the village is already starting to address that with a new emergency management notification system. Next, we do need a contingency plan for commuters. I think that's where we were the hardest hit, is that we weren't planned for a storm of this level of magnitude and so a commuter contingency plan is necessary and also building our CERT program. I ran the post-Sandy neighborhood meetings following Hurricane Sandy. We were able to recruit about thirty volunteers who'll be on the ground with us in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Kikuk.
Yes, I agree also that PSENG should work with the town on our power structure. It should come in and take a look at and evaluate where all the power lines are and work with the town engineer to maintain those areas so that if they ever have a situation like this, we could be more than prepared. And the other thing is, the village engineer should also be working on developing what is known as GO roads. In other words, our main artery, South Orange Avenue, Wyoming Avenue, Scotland Road, and then make sure that those are prepared during a storm.
Thank you. Ms. Mayhew.
I actually lived through Hurricane Sandy. I'm a New Yorker. I actually commute to New York for work every single day and those who were commuters knew what it meant to actually take four hours to get in and back home from work. It was not a pleasurable experience, I will tell you the least. The one thing that I did not see was the leadership out there talking to the community residents. Additionally, there's a woman across the street from me, her eighty-five-year-old mother was without power for fourteen days. Where were the communication and the outreach to PSENG? Quite frankly, it took residents to make it happen and I give kudos to Scott Greenstone, who did the petition.
Thank you. Mr. Sandow.
First, I have to concur with Walter that the paid staff of the police did a fantastic job during the aftermath of the hurricane. Where I thought we were lacking was in communications and I'm not just talking about communications like reverse 911, I'm talking about making information available on the internet. We don't have a website that is easily updated. I got most of my information from Maplewood Online, to be frank. And we need a website that is easily updated, maintainable, and sustainable.
Thank you. Thank you.
I actually think it's a two-tech, a two, two-level thing. It's a tech and a low-tech. One way is the reverse communication, getting after the people, telling them updates, what's going on. But beyond that, we need to go back through our neighborhood watch and association groups, get the, get the information out to the people who are able to get the technology, and then use those watch groups to actually spread it out, and so we make sure we can remediate as quick as possible, but we're reaching the vulnerable population so everybody knows how to, and we get the data back into headquarters to know how to help people.
Thank you. And Ms. Sullivan.
I think if you're going to rely on technology, you have to take into account that when the electricity goes off, so does your computer. We need, we needed to have charging stations or Wi-Fi hotspots, generated power with generators, so that if you're going to put the information out in that fashion, you have to be able to access it. We're also not paying attention to the many residents of South Orange that don't have computers, are elderly. If we need to go door-to-door to, to find out if they're okay, then that needed to be done. And...
Thank you. And let me take the power of the chair to let you know that the League of Women Voters of New Jersey is honoring those people in the communities, in the counties and municipalities who helped the election proceed. I know. So the last question. It was a segue, I couldn't let it go. Mr. Sandow will answer first. In light of the state of New Jersey's imposed 2% budget cap, what creative revenue streams would be appropriate for South Orange? How would this impact our local businesses, our way of life, et cetera?
Okay, the most effective revenue stream we have available to us is high-quality commercial ratables. Unfortunately, many of our fully taxed commercial ratables are old buildings without real significant tax impact. The commercial built, new commercial buildings with tax assessments in the tens of millions of dollars should be those high-quality commercial ratables. But most of these pay only a fraction of what they should pay in an agreement called a pilot, where the property is taken off the tax rolls and the developer negotiates a separate deal with the village to pay less. I think developers and their corporate backers should pay their fair share. The pilot application for Third and Valley states that at the time of construction, ownership will be 90% controlled by JP Morgan Chase. What they're not paying in taxes will instead be additional profit for them, instead of, instead of revenue for us. Maybe some pilot is required, but, but we should have, as I mentioned before, we should have an RFP process where the, where the requirements for the, for the response to the RFP have any requested tax abamements in the response. That way we have leverage to negotiate.
Mr. Schnell.
Yes, given the, the constraints and the finite resources, I think what we need is more smart growth transit-related ratables. And that includes going into the three business corridors, not only the downtown, but it's Irvington Avenue and Valley Street. The other thing, that's on the top-line side, on, on doing it efficiently, one of the ways that I see us doing this is working with volunteers. Not necessarily to have them join committees and spend hours and hours of their time, but targeting in a SWAT-like style their expertise, engineers, architects, designers, attorneys, and, and technologists. When, when it's needed, we can pull them in for the right task.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan.
We need to help our current businesses thrive. We need to develop our downtown district, and I agree that it should be expanded, run Seton Hall all the way up to Ridgewood Ave, Ridgewood Road, Valley Street out to Columbia, Irvington Avenue. And if we increase our business district, we, and, and we assist our businesses in, in thriving, then we will be spreading the tax burden onto the commercial properties and thus help reduce the burden on the taxpayers, resident taxpayers.
Mr. Clark.
I'm in agreement that we definitely need to develop our, our other business corridors. Irvington Avenue and Valley have been ignored for a while, and ratables certainly can come from there. However, one area that is missing, one of our biggest joint expenses with Seton Hall University is public safety. I think if we were to collect from Seton Hall a $50 public safety fee per student, that ends up being nearly $500,000 a year to help support our public safety agencies.
Thank you. Ms. Cullen.
I think one of the best things that we can do in the short term, given the cap, is empower our own staff, our professional staff, to find cost savings. One of the things that was brought up recently is how do you create merit-based incentives for village employees? Right now, we're always spinning our hats about how we can find cost savings, but I think they're well positioned to identify the areas where we can streamline efficiencies, aggressively go after new money, or save money within the departments themselves. So I would like to see the employees feel empowered by the Board of Trustees to identify the cost savings and then get the award from it.
Mr. Kekum.
I do agree with Rob about the, the cost and everything else. And if you actually look at some of the stores downtown, they're all designed, they're, they're short in the front, deep in the, has length. Because we are a transit town, and we have communications to New York, one of the things that we may want to start looking at is going for entrepreneurs to come to town and using those spots, and bringing their small businesses here to expand.
Thank you. Ms. Mahu.
And I think it's striking, but anyway. The business district is really the way to help ease the burden of the taxes that homeowners are currently facing. Quite frankly, if I look at it, we're already paying a sewer tax, a library tax, and a special assessment tax. What more do we need to pay for? I think we have an opportunity to look at grant opportunities and have people fill out grants to get money into the town. And for us, that is where it is. It is about bringing back ratables into South Orange.
What ideas, what ideas do you have to improve parking situation in South Orange? Well, let's start with Ms. Mahu and go the other way.
Okay. Can you guys hear me? The mic is not working well. Okay. What did you say? Higher up? Okay. Is that better? Okay. Oh, he said, "Give me a thumbs up." Yes, you can hear me. Okay. Got it. One of the things is, we know that there's a development that's already happening on Valley and Third, and one of the suggestions was to allocate certain spots for New Jersey Transit and commuters in particular. I will tell you that I do have a concern about building a parking deck in South Orange, given the cost, and also displacing commuters in the town. So for me, I think it's important for us to look at where there are other opportunities and current space where people can park.
Mr. Kekum.
I, I know parking is a great concern, especially if you're a store owner here. I know many people that own businesses in town, and say when they park by their store, they only get 30 minutes, and most of their lunches at this point are $8 plus the $50, $60, $70 ticket. It is a concern, that parking. I think what we should do at this point here is reevaluate some of our parking areas and increase the time. I noticed that most of our parking issues are in the evening. So during the day, I notice most of the lot have sufficient time, and also, in the evening, it becomes a problem. Most people don't even know that there's parking behind the train station for the rest of SOPAC here. So I think we have to have better signage to divert them back there so they can use it. Outside of that, like I said, most of the parking that I see in the problems, in the evening.
Thank you. Ms. Cullen.
Parking is paramount. I love this topic, and I think if we looked at some of the traffic and engineering studies that the village has conducted in the past, we will have to have long-term structured park, parking at some point. The worst thing that we could do is continue using surface parking for commuters from out of town to come in, sit in those spots, which hurts SOPAC and our downtown business community and whatnot. One of the things contemplated by the vision plan was the western edge of the New Jersey Transit lot, which would require a partnership between the village and New Jersey Transit to see that happen.
Mr. Clark.
I'm in agreement with Gina. As I said earlier, I think we definitely need a long-term plan for structured parking in, in the town. In addition, I think we need to try to maximize what we do have now, and we need to try to make our town a more alternative transit-friendly place for our actual residents. Encourage walking, encourage biking, and take greater advantage of our jitney service to provide to the residents.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan.
Well, if we're going to increase the residents in the village by building multi-housing apartments, we're going to have more people in the village, and they may be walking around, but they're also going to have cars, and they're going to be in and out of the village. I see the transit lot, the New Jersey Transit lot, as a potential for us to perhaps buy it back and utilize those spaces for the benefit of the people in South Orange who frequent our, our stores, and also to allow South Orange then to collect the revenues from that lot. Perhaps we could give New Tr, New Jersey Transit some spaces in the Third and Valley parking facility and negotiate some kind of trade-off, so that New Jersey Transit gets their spots, but we get back a lot where we can collect revenues and where our residents and those who are frequenting the downtown can park without a hassle and without the fear of having to pay a $40 parking ticket.
Thank you. Mr. Schnell.
I think we need to be rigorous about the truth of the present. We are out of surface parking space, and although it might be nice to negotiate with New Jersey Transit, I still don't see there, there are too many opportunities where we're going to put it. So I do believe we do need structured parking. I think one of the big issues there will be the interim time while they're doing the construction. I think that's going to be a problem. So one of the, the solutions that I propose is working with the jitney. Actually, the Seton Hall has the shoe fly, we have our jitney. The two are currently not coordinated at all, they run on different routes. There's a lot of time in the middle of the day, non-rush hour times, that they're, that they're being less than utilized. So I, I see ourselves actually combining the uses of those two such that we can reach all the residents around town, thus at least reducing some of the need for the surface parking.
Mr. Sandow.
I think the long-term, the long-term situation absolutely positively requires a parking deck. And a parking deck, not, 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 not just the parking deck that's involved in the Third and Valley proposal, where, where the developer is saying that it's going to cost $500 additional per space for those commuter parking spaces. Where, where will commuters park during the, during the construction? We don't know. There wasn't, there's never been any, there hasn't been any discussion of it. Short-term, I believe that we need more homogeneous parking regulations. Every lot in town has different rules. I don't know where I can park legally for one hour, two hours, three hours. I don't know how much it's going to cost me. I have to go to these little machines. Some, sometimes I'm paying three times for the same, three people are paying for the same spot because those machines don't give credit for pay, for money that's already paid like parking, like parking meters do. And we should stop with the punitive enforcement. $40 tickets are just too much.
Thank you. Next question. What would you do, if anything, to improve the quality of water supply, and how could it be accomplished? Let's start with Ms. Sullivan and go down.
I have a quick question. Is it 30 seconds or one minute that everybody has for the response?
These, these are general questions for everyone.
Okay, so everybody has one minute?
Up to one minute. If you want to be terse, and you're very fast, you can, that would be fine.
The, the water issue.
Water.
We currently have a contract with East Orange Water. Clearly, there's a lot of problems with transparency, trust with that commission. There's litigation, and the village residents just are not comfortable with any information that has been provided by that commission. I think that's a shame, and I think that our residents should not have to worry about whether they're being told the truth by the East Orange Water Commission, by the Board of Trustees, by the, the DEP. I think it's a big problem, because whether the water is tainted or not, the residents are afraid, and that should never, ever happen. There should be a confidence in the information that they're, they're getting. Our contract with the East Orange Water Commission is coming up in a few years. We either need to renegotiate with them and really have proper oversight as to how that they're going to operate, or we look out, out to other options, other sources of water for the village.
So we are currently under litigation, and there's only so much that we actually can learn because of that. We do know that the contract is, is due in a couple of years. We do know that one of our trustees independently had been testing. Thankfully for that, that we actually were more aware, and it resulted in two of the folks being indicted. So I give credit there. We're also working with the DEP Department of Environmental Protection to make sure that the, the numbers are not exceeding levels that are going to be unsafe. The, the truth is, the federal levels are five times higher than what New Jersey allows, so the first thing, as Kelly said, is to make sure that our residents understand that the water is safe. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't be taking notice. Again, where we have vulnerable people, people either infants, old people, people whose immune systems are compromised, should be taking extra care, perhaps filtering the water, but the, the, we do need to look at the sources and make sure going forward that we're all safe.
Thank you. Mr. Schnell. Uh, Mr. Sandow, I'm sorry.
The situation with New Jer, with, with East Orange Water doesn't have a single easy solution, unfortunately. It's a, it's very, very deeply ingrained infrastructure that's very difficult to change. One of the, one of the things that people have talked about is, well, why can't we get New Jersey American Water? Well, we probably can, but we have to start now to build infrastructure to be able, to be able to take that water in, in three years when our contract is up. We also get water from north through the Holland Road connection, but, but that's all, that's all the way on the other side of town from where the water towers are. So the direction of flow would be an issue, of getting that water up to the water towers where it can do some good. New Jersey American Water is also surface water, which means that, which means that runoff can cause contamination as well. So I think the, the short-term answer is that we need to be, we need to be mandating the installation of airstrippers to make sure that the water is, is free of volatile, volatile organics. And in the long-term, we should be reviewing what our options are for, for other companies.
Thank you. Ms. Mahu.
I would agree in terms of our ability to review options with other companies, but I do will say is communication, communication, communication. Transparency, transparency, transparency. I think the residents have a right to understand what took place, where are we going, and what are our options. Quite frankly, I did not get that. I will tell you, I now drink bottled water. I do not drink water from my sink in South Orange. And for us to be in a town that we are, a village of South Orange, a vibrant community, for us to be afraid to drink the water, that's a shame.
Mr. Kekum.
This goes back to the infrastructure topic earlier. I'm aware of the hookup down there on Holland Road myself. As we go forward, we have to start taking a look at, do we deal with East Orange Water, or do we start looking at the Commonwealth Water Hookup down there and try to figure out what's, what's the actual cost of, of getting pumps to push it up the hill, and then going back? These are options that we have to study as far as cost, and if we do go back to East Orange Water, how many people will trust it? So what happens here is, we have to, it's double advocate. Do we go back to where we've been with the possibility, or do we start looking for the cost of the infrastructures to hook up into the future for positive water flow?
Ms. Cullen.
I would have to agree with what most of the candidates said prior to me. It's a complicated situation, because with any litigation matter, we're in a closed session. The Board of Trustees, they go, you know, behind the curtain, and they discuss these litigation issues. But what we do know is that our own village council has been working very closely with the Attorney General's office in the indictment of the people who were involved with East Orange Water Commission. I think moving forward, the public has to be very much aware of what are, what our different options are, because East Orange Water Commission is going to be one, and once they get the strippers in there, the trade-off is, you know, can we deal with people that we don't trust? Then there's always capacity issues, who has the water that they can actually filter into South Orange? And then the third one is always going to be cost. We have to, you know, look at the series of alternatives, and what's cost prohibitive, and what would be beneficial to the taxpayers.
Mr. Clark.
At this point, a lot of what I would, would say is mostly redundant, but obviously as the environmental chair, I'm concerned about this situation. The fact is that we're talking about water, so whatever we have to do, we have to do because it's water, and we all need it. A lot, a lot of the details of what we will have to do going forward aren't going to come out until litigation is finished. That's just, that's just the fact. But when that happens, I assume part of litigation will be, you know, putting airstrippers, et cetera, in place. They have to have some technological fixes to deal with this. But going forward, it does become an issue of trust, as many people have brought up. Can our, can our residents trust East Orange Water? Can we trust with East Orange Water? At the very least, we know we're going to have to continue monitoring whoever is our ultimate water provider.
Thank you. Next question regards Seton Hall. What can we do, what can you do, to improve the relationship with Seton, between Seton Hall and the village? We're going to start with Ms. Mahu and go back, and then this way.
I'm sorry?
It's the second time you've fixed these.
No, hey, I'll take it. No, I have a problem with that. So I'll tell you, I'm actually a Seton Hall University graduate, and when I was at And when I was at Seton Hall, which was the late 80s and early 90s, there was a relationship between the town and Seton Hall. I think that along the way, with a lot of the transition and changes here in South Orange, but also at Seton Hall, we lost the communication and partnership that we could have had with Seton Hall. I think it's important for us to reengage Seton Hall. In fact, I had a conversation with a gentleman who sits on the board of Seton Hall, and his response was, you know what? The dialogue actually broke down, and somewhere along the way, we need to reengage. I think that there's an opportunity for Seton Hall to participate in South Orange. They are in the community and should be part of the community and participate.
Thank you. Mr. Kiko.
I deal a lot with Seton Hall. I'm on the South Orange Seton Hall Engagement Committee. I enjoy going up there. I also, well, actually, last year, I started a alliance club up there. It's called the Campus Club. And working with the students up there, they're very motivated to get things done. One of the things, I believe Adam Lohmer, I think it's Lerner, being a graduate and working up there, I think he'd be a great liaison between the town of South Orange and Seton Hall, considering he knows both groups rather well. So working with him, we should be able to get a better flow of communications up there. And like I said, with the students up there, working all this period of time, I don't see why we can't.
Thank you. Ms. Collins.
I have a very specific record of having worked at Seton Hall University. I was a student. I was the student body president there. I was the founder of the Village Liaison Committee. Two of the initiatives that I worked on was creating the Shoe Fly Shuttle, then circulate students into our downtown, and also implementing the Pirate's Gold Card. So I actually have a record of specific items that have been done for Seton Hall that benefit the community at large. I wrote a letter to the editor. It was an open letter to the Seton Hall community that was published in the Satonian this past week, and it calls for a full integration of the university and the community at large. It is a part of the South Orange 2013 platform. We call it Communiversity. We want to expand our service learning opportunities in this village. And where we lack resources, such as in our school districts that are looking at a $15 million budget deficit, we hope to augment that with things like the College of Education. The same thing in Village Hall. We need personnel and staff and people to help out. We can have their political science students and their Masters of Public Administration program come help us with some of the things that are happening in Village Hall. And the same holds true for all of their colleges and departments on campus and this community at large. A full integration.
Thank you. Mr. Carter.
I'm in agreement with Sheena about a full integration with Seton Hall University. We have a university in our town, and we need to make better advantage of that. To Joe's point, Adam Lerner would be perhaps an excellent bridge. However, what we really need to do, because students come and go and because trustees come and go, what we really need to do is have a sit-down with Secundiversity. We need to find out what their master plan is, their plan for building, developing, going forward, and we need to incorporate that into our master plan and our village's vision plan because as people come and go, that's going to be the thing we have to stick to. That's the plan.
Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. I think it's unfortunate that given Sheena's record with Seton Hall, that Seton Hall still feels like the step sister, the bad stepsister in town. Seton Hall is a resident of this town, and Seton Hall has resources up there that we need to tap into. We, as a village, need to engage the Seton Hall community and bring them into the village. For instance, we have the SOPAC Center. It's a cultural center. We've got Seton Hall with a theater arts program. Bring those students down into the PAC Center. Bring them into the village. Bring them... Make them feel that they are part of this community and a vibrant part of this community. There is intellectual capital up at Seton Hall that we simply are not taking advantage of, and it's because, perhaps, of some bad feelings that have incubated over the years. Well, I say let's end it and let's make Seton Hall feel like a part of this community and give back to this community that we all live together in.
Thank you. Mr. Schnell.
Yeah, this is a topic that's near and dear to me. I went to college at Lafayette, we're Eastern Pennsylvania, and I was a big part of community fairs. I went out into the town and integrated both the town and the gown there. It's also, that's one of the reasons I've been the subcommittee chair for our South Orange Town and Gown Community Relations Group that I did a few years ago. And one of the results of that was the framework for a single resident card that could be used, and I think that is a topic that needs to be picked up again. The platform is so important for us, this idea of Communiversity, that we've actually had a couple of meetings there. We're exploring ways to begin. And as has been alluded to earlier, it goes in both directions. On the education side, it would be a great thing to have more students come into town, be tutors. And reversely, we have town experts. We have professional experience that can mentor some of these students as they're getting ready to go out into a challenging world of professions. We could do that in both directions. I was recently up there with Sheena to attend a Calhoun Ripken lecture, and so the idea is to make us work better together.
Thank you. Mr. Sandow.
Okay. As a resident of Tuxedo Park, I may have a slightly different opinion on the subject than my esteemed colleagues here. While I agree with the desire for integration, Seton Hall needs to be more respectful of the neighborhoods in its vicinity. This works both ways. It works two ways. If we want integration, then they need to work with us as well. There are too many off-campus rooming houses in the Seton Village neighborhood. There are now going to be off-campus rooming houses in the Tuxedo Park neighborhood. Rooming houses that, from everything that I can see, are actually illegal in terms of what's on the zoning, what is zoned for those houses. There's nothing in the village code that says you can put 12 students in a single-family home, but it's being done, and I think we should work with Seton Hall to make sure that that stops.
Thank you. We're running late, but there's one question I really want to find out the answers to. So give me 30 seconds for your definition of what are we going to do about the library? How are we going to, within our financial resources, can we make it a bright and welcoming space and more appealing and a asset to the village? In 30 seconds. Let's start with Mr. Sandow.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
No. The library needs some spiffing up. What can we do to make it a bright, appealing, welcoming space?
Just very quickly, I am not a... As a person who works in information technology, I don't go to the library very often. I have to apologize because I have never actually been inside of it. But I would have to say that there are... I think certainly we should make use of technology to improve what's available in the library, and we should make use of... And we should improve the look and feel of the building from the outside so that it looks better and more inviting.
Ms. Mayhew.
I think it goes back to the point that we raised earlier, that we need to make an assessment of all of the buildings in South Orange that need renovation. We are spending most of our time at the Village Hall, but we have the library, we have the Bear Center, we have a number of buildings in South Orange that we own that need to be renovated. The library should be a library that all of the students and all of the children in South Orange can go to, and I think it's critically important for us to look at that as well versus just looking at other areas that serve a lower population.
Several years back, they did a paint day here in the junior high. I was one of the volunteers. There must have been about 100 parents and about 100 students from Seton Hall, I believe, but I could find out from the person who coordinated the whole event that McCarty's, I believe, was the one that donated the paint. I believe the firehouse bought pizzas down for Bunny, Dunkin' Donuts had stuff. And it was just a bunch of parents and a bunch of kids from Seton Hall and a bunch of kids that went to the junior high. And I believe the cost was probably minimum on that. So it's a group effort.
I would echo a few of the sentiments first. Again, the capital budget and figuring out where this is a priority in all the buildings that we have to assess. And then I really agree with Joe. I think this is one of those things where I think the librarians would welcome volunteers who would want to come in and help spiff it up a little bit. I've done that, as I mentioned. I helped organize the community cleanup after Hurricane Sandy, and I love the idea of mobilizing residents who care about a facility and are willing to roll up their sleeves and get involved. So that's something I would love to be involved with.
Mr. Carter.
I'm in the unenviable position of now having to echo a few of these people. Yes, also being someone involved in South Orange River Day, for example, I've seen firsthand what you can get done when you mobilize volunteers. So that is one example. However, I also want to echo the idea that we really do need to do an overall assessment and inventory of all of our infrastructures. And then we'll have to do the hard prioritizations.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. This might be a deja vu, but I don't know if any of you know that the old I's building was our first library? And I don't know if you know the condition of that building, but it's in terrible neglect. Our town hall has been neglected. I certainly don't want to see that happen to our current library, but again, we all need to assess the functionality of all of our town buildings and make the best decision, the most common sense and fiscally responsible decision as to how to maintain our village properties.
So I love our library. My daughter has used that library a great deal, as well as I myself. But I won't repeat the other comments because actually, this is a sad thing, but there actually is a nonprofit called the Friends of the Public Library, and they're out there today. There is a board, and they're doing what's called friend raising, which is sort of the concept that people are talking about here, but it's going out and it's finding if there are grants out there, reaching out to other organizations and foundations, as well as doing friend raising just around town to head money for the coffers. It's a great cause, and we should be helping.
That's it. So we have come to the wrap-up time. Each of the candidates will be able to speak for up to two minutes and answer questions that haven't been answered and let us know why we should vote for them. Let's start with Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. In my opening comments this evening, you heard me mention several things that I've been involved with. I didn't do that to tout my accomplishments. I did that to try to let you know the kind of person that I am. I'm running for South Orange Village trustee because I believe that my educational and professional background, coupled with my volunteer work and my lifetime of experiences in South Orange Village, make me uniquely qualified to serve and that my presence on the board will enhance its composition. A little walk down nostalgic alley. I love South Orange. I've been here all my life. I don't know if any of you remember buying dance skins in Bellens or shoes in Jem Bootery? If you went to Stark's Five and Ten for Bazooka Bubble Gum? Kids World up on Irvington Avenue was a thriving business. My mom loved it. She loved buying clothes for children. Phillips Barber Shop? Whether you're a boy or a girl, you sat in that chair and they cut your hair and then they took your picture and they put it in the window for everyone to see. And of course, Grunnings, our world-class ice cream parlor. I want to see South Orange thrive again. I want property values to increase so that homeowners don't feel that they have to leave to get out from under the burden of oppressive taxes. I want a vibrant downtown with successful businesses that can afford to help shoulder the burden of our taxes in town and thus relieve the property owners. I want our tree-lined streets to be free of potholes and patchwork repairs. I want every village resident to have a voice, not in criticism of things that have been done, but before, of working in partnership with the government to make decisions that impact their life. I believe that in conjunction with the trustees and the village president, that I can help achieve these goals by implementing creative, common sense, and fiscally responsible solutions to these problems.
Thank you. Mr. Schnell.
Never confuse a clear vision for a short distance. Although you may have heard, most of us on the panel here, express our ideas and aspirations for South Orange, I am quite aware of the challenges in order to work through the obstacles and achieve our collective goals. You've likely heard the phrase, "Past performance does not guarantee future results," which is true. However, I believe that a strong track record is a very good indicator. All three of us on the Row B ticket, Sheena, Walter, and myself, have worked very hard over the years and have been effective leaders who have made significant improvements to our community. I am very fortunate to have been successful in my professional life, and I retired a year and a half ago. Now I want to go out beyond that success and continue to shoot for significance with my available time. My desire is to use my energy to make an impact, a difference that will make South Orange residents proud. I intend to use my available resources, time, personal and business relationships, relevant expertise, to collaborate with my colleagues and others in town to achieve results. I believe that my leadership, experience, and acquired skills will provide me with a unique position to accomplish these goals. I found that it usually takes passion and perseverance to push past obstacles and make it to the desired outcome. One area that I think we need to improve upon is in overall communication and inclusion. I believe this is necessary to make sure that our residents are kept apprised of the large and significant projects that affect them and allow them input into the decision-making process so that they are not stuck with a frustrating feeling of being left out. The three of us on the Row B ticket, Sheena, Walter, and I, are very effective on collaborating and working with our complementary skill sets to plan and implement goals. We cannot do everything as individuals alone, but rather look forward to working on your behalf as effective leaders and communicators, working with all of you to make this town a better place to work, study, and enjoy our lives together.
Thank you. Mr. Sandow.
As trustee, I will first and foremost always be an advocate for the taxpayers. I will call out waste when I see it. I will work hard to keep taxes low. In my opinion, 2% means 2%. I will seek transparency, and I will seek an end to backroom deals. I will seek an end to no-bid contracts. In my 25 years' experience managing information technology, I've been deeply involved in numerous commercial construction projects. I have worked side-by-side with architects, engineers, designers, facilities managers, all sorts of trades on numerous successful projects, and completed these projects on time, within budget, and on scope. As trustee, I will bring this experience with me and put it to good use in oversight of future village-run construction projects. South Orange needs a long-term plan to address our infrastructure. Our streets should not be allowed to deteriorate to the point of being hazardous. Decisions need to be made regarding village-owned buildings, keeping in mind the tax impact of multimillion-dollar renovations. Instead of building monuments to ourselves, we should be making our streets safe to drive. We need to find new ways to attract high-quality retail business, both downtown into the Irvington Avenue Business District. Attracting high-quality retail business means having an inventory of high-quality spaces. To that end, let's make it difficult for irresponsible landlords to ignore vacant and poorly maintained properties and violate zoning ordinances. South Orange Village needs strong leadership on the board trustees. South Orange needs more than just community leaders who are passionate about South Orange. We need more than that. We need someone willing to stand up, ask tough questions, and demand straight answers. Someone who's compelled to do the right thing for the citizens and the taxpayers of the village without being beholden to a personal agenda. I am that person, and I promise to be the independent voice. If you agree, I hope you'll vote for me on May 14. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayhew.
First of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to participate this evening. I fundamentally believe that it is time to re-energize our community and tap into the creativity and intellectual capital that surrounds us. We need to transform our downtown to more of a business district, from Seton Hall University to Ridgewood Road, from Valley Street to Columbia High School, from Irvington Avenue to Fairview Avenue. We need to turn our community into a hub of vibrancy and innovation. We have a community full of people with great ideas who take initiative, like I mentioned earlier, like Scott Greenstone, who took an initiative in making sure the train schedule went back into place, and we are appreciative for that. What I look at is if and when I am elected to village trustee, I want to engage and hear the ideas from the voices of our community, for they inspire growth, change, and make our community better. We need to put South Orange back on the map. We need to be a destination, not just a drive-thru. No more paying for studies we get, we can get for free from institutions that surround us or internally from our intellectual capital within South Orange. No more should our taxes continue to go up while our services decline. We know that a town rises because of its culture, engagement of residents, and strong relationships. Let's remove the stained glass that we're looking through and capture the heartbeat of our community and look through a clear window where we see a village that is premier residential community that others would want to emulate and live there. So I thank you, and I hope that I have the honor to serve you as a village trustee. In closing, I ask that you vote for the village first team to give us an opportunity to really put the village back as the first priority.
Thank you. Mr. Kiko.
First, I would like to thank the legal women voters and all those who come out tonight. One of the things about living in this town for many years, and as Kelly was talking about Grunnings and the old places, I remember them, you get to see... about Runnings and the old places, I remember them, you get to see the good decisions and the bad decisions made. And the problem is, the good decisions are good, the bad decisions is, we ought to live with them over a period of time. And going forward, we should be able to correct those decisions. Each one of us know about business, business structures, everything else. And we do know that we all have to work with Seton Hall, and hopefully Seton Hall knows that they would have to work with us. We all know about taxes. We all know that we have the pay taxes. But it's our responsibility to make sure that you are represented fairly and honestly. That's the bottom line. I always say to people that I work with, as you move up the ladder, you are becoming a spokesperson. As I moved up to being a district governor, I realized, when I go to a meeting, I'm not talking for me. I'm talking about all the people in the district. I'm their voice. I have to go back to them and then go forward. As a trustee, I am responsible for your voice, to listen, to decide, and then go forward. And I'm asking you for the vote for Team Ag as a responsible group. We think methodically, and we think as a team, and we can work with the current seating governors right there, the president, the other Board of Trustees. This is what has to happen. We have to be open-minded both ways, villagers and the trustees. And that's what I ask. I ask for your voice, your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Callen.
I think I'm going to wing it. I want your vote on Tuesday, May 14, for myself and my running mates, Walter Clark and Steve Schnell. There was a lot of ideas that were thrown out tonight. You know, we should do this, we should do that, we could do this, et cetera. And there was actually a lot of points where I was like, well, we have done that, and there's actually a history to that, and we looked at alternatives, and the community participated in that. But it's hard to do in about 30 seconds. What we deliver as a ticket is a record of village municipal volunteerism for a decade. I've heard from the Village First Line that, you know, they've lived here their whole lives, and it's made me feel bad at times because I've only been here 11 years. I actually called my mom. I'm like, Mom, I don't know how to deal with this. I feel kind of inferior. She's like, Sheena, you know what? It's not the amount of time, it's what you've done with that time. When you go to our BIOS, you are going to see from the South Orange 2013 ticket, people who have already delivered results. We've been at the budget workshops. We've been at the Board of Trustees meetings. We've been lobbyists, activists. We've been participants in community meetings that generated ideas. It didn't take an election to get that from the three of us. It's been there from day one, and it's here right now. And on Tuesday, May 14, we want to show you what 1,460 days in office would be like with the three of us. Where we need to move is a government customer service base. The one biggest obstacle I would like to achieve, and I've seen time and time again, is residents have ideas, and we send them to 10 different locations, to 10 different people, to get 10 different answers, and start that cycle again. I would like to bring our residents in, in one location, with the 10 right people, and come up with one answer. What you're going to get from me is hustle. I hustle. I work hard. I don't like to move slow. That's bureaucracy. It's a tape. It has a color. It's red. I don't want to see that anymore in our government. We can move forward together, and I'm asking for your vote for this ticket because we have a record of achievement.
Thank you. And Mr. Clark.
I have to follow that? So you're not just going to get hustle, you're going to get passion as well. I'd like to thank the League and everybody who came out. We have discussed a number of ideas here tonight, but ultimately what's going to be meaningful for South Orange is execution of those ideas. My business background, I established and ran a design business in New York City for 10 years that served a portion of 500 clients. So from budget to staffing to client management to workflow optimization, I had to oversee it all. And I oversaw it all because I had to. That developed in me a hands-on holistic way of thinking, a do-it-yourself attitude. That's where my concern for sustainability and environmentalism comes from, from a pragmatic concern for the present, but also the concern for the future and the need for long-term thinking. So whether it's saving tax dollars now by encouraging the use of hybrid police vehicles or whether it's improving the future of South Orange in the long term by ensuring that there are recycled bins in all of our parks, I've been here as a volunteer, developing real results, and I have a proven track record of results for this town. I didn't pop up yesterday and just decide that, hey, you know, I'm going to improve South Orange today. I've been doing it already for years as a volunteer. And as I said earlier, in doing that, I learned to collaborate, motivate, and lead volunteers towards real results, which is different than the business world, really does. So ultimately, ideas are important to have, but ideas are cheap because execution is what counts. And with South Orange 2013, we can get that execution.
Thank you. Let's thank them all. They were wonderful.[1722.54][1722.54][applause]